Good evening, and welcome to everyone to the South Bend Community School Corporation Board of Trustees Work Session at the South Bend Community School Corporation Building 42325. There was no executive session. It's now 5:30, and we are now ready to call the meeting to order. Is there a motion to call this meeting to order? Is there a motion to call the meeting? Second?
Second.
It was motion by Ms. Lee and second by Mr. Snidecki to call this meeting to order. Ms. Hernandez, can you please call the roll?
Yes, good afternoon. Mr. Marcus Ellison?
Present.
Mr. Mark Costello?
Here.
Ms. Kate Lee?
Here.
Dr. Stuart Green?
Here.
Mr. Carlos Leyva?
Here.
Mr. Bill Snidecki?
Here.
Dr. Jeanette McCullough?
Present. We have a call. It is recommended that the school board trustee adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Do we have a... We have a second?
Second.
It has been motion by Mr. Snidecki and second by Ms. Lee. There are no questions, concerns? Ms. Hernandez, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Ellison?
Present.
Aye.
Mr. Costello?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Dr. Green?
Your aye.
Mr. Leyva?
Here.
Mr. Snidecki?
Here.
Dr. McCullough?
The motion passes. Attorney Augustino will lead the discussion on the consent decree, item point 301. This meeting is for the school board trustees to discuss the consent decree. Board members can ask questions during this time. After the board has asked questions, then I will motion to have the visitors come up. Ms. Augustino?
Thank you, Dr. McCullough, board members, and public. I have five points or conclusions. I'll give those to you upfront, then you can forget everything else after that. There's five things that I think are important that I want to stress. The consent decree we're talking about was entered back 45 years ago in 1980. And where we're at today, that needs to be discussed, talked about, focused on, are the following. I think we need to continue to pay attention to and address issues of disproportionate discipline in the schools. That's something that continues to need to be addressed coming out of the consent decree. Second thing, we need to be aware of and address and continue to monitor disproportionate classification of minorities, particularly black males, in special needs. We need to be aware of and be cognizant of, as we go through with difference in changing our building uses, our boundaries, and so forth. We need to be aware of, conscious of, the impact on that, on minorities. And those need to be approved by the court through the consent decree process. Those are, I think, three things that come out of the consent decree that we need to continue to focus on. And then today, I think we need to have continued discussion on the fourth topic, which is solutions. What are the ways to address some of these ongoing issues? And the fifth thing, which I think should be obvious to you, is that you're doing this in an environment in which money for school corporations is diminishing. So, as has been announced, and a number of people have reported, South Bend Schools is looking at losing $27 million from the state over through 2028. So, as we discuss issues that come out of the consent decree, we have to be aware of how other decisions on other aspects of the school corporations affects the pool of money available to do all things within the school corporation. Which means, from time to time, we do have to make tough decisions. Now, I know there have been some steps already undertaken to start trimming the budget and look at more efficient ways to do things. And I think that's a pathway we need to keep open. Because as you... When we talk about solutions for some of the issues that we have to deal with out of the consent decree, some of those solutions are going to cost money. So, if you've got a shrinking pool of money, and you have a need that requires some money, then you have to think about how you affect that pool of money on other things, so that you have money to handle the things you need to handle. And those are just some overbroad statements or categories, but I wanted to focus you in on those five points. What I'd like to do next is go ahead and... Let's see where my word went. Start with the consent decree. There we go. Okay, as you can see, this was a typewritten order back in 1990. I don't think they were using word processors back then. But it's a very brief agreement, or consent decree, between the United States, and this was an action brought by Department of Justice, and the school corporation. And like most consent decrees, typically, the Justice Department reaches out to the school corporation and indicates it's investigating things. And oftentimes, the consent decree, the lawsuit for the consent decree and the agreement are pretty much filed pretty close together. Because by the time the action gets filed, there's been a workout done. And so, you can see the consent decree, and I'm not going to read it, but there's basically 10 points in it that affect what needs to be done. And back in 1980, requirement under point number one... Let's see here. Let me get to that. "The defendants shall formulate a specific desegregation plan for student assignment by September 1, 1980." On point number two, "The desegregation plan shall provide that percentage of black students in each school shall be within 15 percentage points of the total percentage of black students in the school corporation." And that continues to be the standard, and we do need to continue to do reporting on compliance with that. Point number three, "The integration of students of other national origins shall be implemented so that each... So that such students are not subjected to extreme isolation, and so that the possible continuation of appropriate special programs for such students is not precluded." Four, "The desegregation plan shall provide that if the transportation of students is required, such transportation shall be designed so that all racial groups share as equally as possible." Five deals with closing of schools. And if you close schools, you have to do it in a way that the impact on all racial groups is equal across the board. Six deals with the faculty, and that faculty should reflect the racial composition of the students. Seven, "The desegregation plan shall provide for staff training, curriculum evaluation and revision, facilities comparability, and substantially equal discipline practices." And this point number seven, I'll jump ahead a little bit, comes up later on in some stipulations on the... By the parties on the protective order for the school corp to report on discipline and make sure we don't have disproportionate practices. And I'll talk about that in just a little bit. Point number eight, "The school board shall continue to pursue its present affirmative action hiring policies." Just a quick point on that. We had a Supreme Court case last year that took away the DEI from universities. There's been no indication that that's going to apply, at least from the court at our school level. There was an effort with South Bend, there is actually. There's a Senate bill that passed that does require... That's going to impact point number eight. Number nine, "By the beginning of the 1981-82 school year, the defendant..." That's the school corp, "shall completely... Shall complete fully the implementation of the desegregation plan." And then by... And then for point number 10, "By November 1 of 1980, '81, '82, and '83, the school corporation is supposed to provide a report regarding total faculty by race, total faculty of each... By race of each school facility, school and central office administrative staff by race, administrative staff by race for each school facility, student enrollment by race, total student enrollment by race for each school facility, and number of students by race enrolled in each classroom and each class period during the third Friday in September preceding the filing of the report." So, some pretty detailed filing requirements. So, that's the consent order, and that's our starting point of what we need to comply with. So, I'm just going to run through a couple other items here to bring you up to speed of where we're at now. So, let's go to the next item. I've put here, I downloaded, and this can be done through Pacer, but this is the chronological case summary for the court. And you can go online under Pacer and access this. And it's got the entries of all things that occurred in this lawsuit since it was transferred to a digital record. So, there was a little bit of a gap from 1980 till, let's see when the first entry here is, to 1992. That's when it got converted to a paper docket. But I'm just showing this you so that you can see that this is a continuing matter that has periodic reporting, periodic stipulation between the parties, modifications on that. And then I'll talk about the key modifications here in just a second. But this gives you an idea of the amount of activity that's occurred. If you're getting dizzy, let me know. You can click here on these hyperlinks, and that'll open up the document that's referenced there, so you can read those if you want. You can also go to the Department of Education website. They maintain, their Office of Civil Rights maintains a list of all the consent decrees that they're involved or grouped by the type of discrimination. And you can also dive in there to take a look at. But I'm putting this up here so people understand, if you need to go somewhere for a reference or to look up something, you can use the Pacer system. And you can then go in and take a dive and see all the activity. So, and then the most recent activity, I will say, in case it hasn't been announced yet, maybe I'm stealing someone's thunder. But the last entry in here, we just recently went to the Department of Justice and then filed with the court to approve the temporary adjustments. The last round dealt with the change-up in keeping Kennedy where it was at and not moving to La Salle. And also, the changes at Cook, Willard, and Dickinson that we... So, that we modified the plan off of that. We had to go get the Department of Justice consent. We filed the motion, and then the court on April 22 just approved that. So, I think there's going to be communication to parents in the community about this, this event. All right, let's go to the next item here. So, one of the key modifications along the way was in April of 2018. And in 2018, the parties stipulated a couple of things. "The district shall recruit students from the New Measal and Cook Willard to apply to magnet schools with available seats. District shall move the Hamilton Traditional Program to Marshall Intermediate Center." And then some additional information requirements here, focusing on non-discrimination in student discipline, more comprehensive analysis of transportation data, and high school student assignment issues. So, in 2018, there was an add-on, I would say, to the requirements of the consent decree to cover additional areas. But like I said, if you go to the original consent decree, item seven did require or address the need to provide substantially equal discipline practices. So, this is, I think, focusing on that because I think there was concern raised. And if you go through that docket sheet that I showed just a minute ago, you'll see a number of times where the public files, briefs, information, letters, brings things to the attention of the Department of Justice and the courts. of the Department of Justice and the courts, and as a result of some of that, you've had this modification. So here is an example of the letter from the Department of Justice in '21, because this issue of discipline had been addressed or had been brought up, and then the question was, did it get addressed? And in August of '21, the Department of Justice was expressing its dissatisfaction and bringing to the school's attention a number of things that were missing. And I could go through all the details of this, but I think it's a, it's not as significant for tonight's discussion because this is a whole other program to just do this. But there was concern in '21, and, and the reason that's important is because that continues to follow through in subsequent communications and then requirements under the consent decree. Then we have Hush Blackwell, which is the law firm that's been retained and been used by the school corp in this matter. John Borowski, he responds to, to the issues, and again, I'm not going to go through this to, in specific, but, but I think at the end of the day, there's an acknowledgement that there are some shortcomings and that the school corporation was missing the mark with respect to disciplinary practices. So the school did develop a master compliance plan, and I'll be honest, I haven't, I don't know where things stand on this right now, but I did discover that a master compliance plan was developed. It seems to be a very thorough plan with very specific goals and criteria for measuring performance and steps that needed to be taken. I think it's, well, I'll say this, it's my suggestion, we come back to this and take an inventory and grade ourselves on where we're at based on this compliance plan. The one that I have here, I'm going to say is probably outdated in terms of scorekeeping. It comes from a filing that was done a number of years back, but I do think that it does identify areas specifically in a way that you can kind of keep track of, are things that were supposed to be done, done? Are we missing some things? And, you know, what can we do to make sure that we're compliant with the consent decree? So I'm more, without, again, going through the details of this, making you aware of it, and suggesting that's something that we need to come back with and assess ourselves Okay, now we have another stipulation for modifying some compliance issues with the consent decree. This deals with a matter that, as a result of the discipline issues, one of the things that was discussed about, how do we address this, and can we revise our discipline code, how we go about disciplining? And this is bringing us into the present right now, because we were supposed to have a code done for the '24, '25 year. We didn't make that. So with stipulation with the Department of Justice, the schedule's modified. The goal is to be up and running by '24, '25 school year, but now the, the objective is to be ready for '25, '26 school year. And I believe that the updated code is being reviewed internally, but that, that, again, ties in with the discipline concern and proportionality with respect to that. And in fact, I'll put it up here, just for quick reference. So the court, as you can see here on August of 2019, of '24, went ahead and approved the modification for the stipulation of the Code of Conduct. So it is now allowed to take effect for the '25, '26 school year. You can see here that this was a process that started with stipulation in '24, and we're now going to be two years down the road before something is actually occurring One of the other issues that, and I'm going to ask Ms. Alitha Jones to come talk here in just a few minutes, but I haven't seen this make its way into the consent decree action directly, but there, as I said at the beginning, there has been a concern about disproportionality in classifying black males as special ed. And so I know Ms. Jones, NAACP, has raised the issue. Ms. Brewer has responded to that. I don't know that we've gotten a full reaction to that yet from, from NAACP, but Ms. Brewer did go through the history and, and then tried to break down the categories, and then did break down by race, who's categorized in which category. So for autism, for example, you've got 29.5% African-American, 21.8 Hispanic, 36.6 white, disaggregated by race, and then she's went through a number of categories here, and so I have not interpreted the data myself to tell you whether this specifically shows anything or not. This is relatively fresh information, but it's something for us to continue to look at. It's an issue that's been raised, and I think we do need to pay attention to it. And that's, I think that's enough for the overview here. I do think that, you know, education is part of the answer here in terms of getting training on how we can make things better when it comes to disproportionality. And I think, I did put in here a Yale Law School study on consent decrees, and it's, it's an older study, and it was done in, back in the, I think in the '80s, but one of the key points out of this is that need to make sure that you have input from the victims of discrimination in formulating solutions. Sometimes the consent decree processes, process between lots of lawyers and the court, and we aren't really including the people that are impacted in formulating the solutions. So that's something to think about here, too. So I know that's a fast overview of lots of information, but, I mean, this brings us back really to the, the points that need addressing right now, again, disciplinary, disproportion, disproportionality in discipline when it comes to minorities, disproportionality in classifying black males as special needs, and then being conscious that as we make decisions on buildings and boundaries, we need to get consent decree approval. So with that, I think it'd be appropriate, if you would like, Ms. Jones, if you have any reaction or response now, or, I know we talked briefly before, and you indicated you might ask for a different time to make your presentation.
I would like to say that I appreciate that you brought us the point, I didn't think you would, but there are some concerns with some other things.
Okay.
But I'll take my three minutes now, but I would like to ask that the NAACP comes back and be allowed to present the overview that each one of you have a copy of. Before I forget, because I didn't know this was going to be put on the, on the table, but I do have a concern with your initial opening statements in tying it in with finances, when you were warning the board that what they decide is going to be determined by certain finances, which I get that, but the thing is, what I have found, when you were talking about things to improve education for black children, money always becomes an issue. But this corporation doesn't have an issue with the magnet process, which serves the white community and the academies. The corporation doesn't have an issue with the bilingual department. I don't have an issue with it, except for the fact that that department gets federal, state, and funding from the corporation. But when we talk about establishing and keeping something in place that's going to guarantee fairness, we want to talk about money, that, that's a problem. That's a problem. Alitha Jones, 1319 East Victoria Street. I'm just going to give you a very brief introduction of our position on the matter. In light of the conversation, or dare I say, debate brewing over the relevance of the 1980 South Bend Community School Corporation's consent decree, the South Bend NAACP would like to point out some of the historical facts surrounding the order and why it is imperative we maintain it. It is important to learn from the past and apply it to the present. In regard to the consent decree, our position today is what it has always been. It's the law, it's relevant, and very much needed. Even after the 1954 Supreme Court decision, Brown versus Board of Education, made the concept of separate but equal illegal, South Bend Community School Corporation was slow to eliminate segregated schools. It took years, but the DOJ ultimately sued South Bend for its failure to comply with the Supreme Court's Brown versus Board of Education. I won't go into it in detail, but you do know the original order alleges that South Bend School Corporation, its Board of School Trustees, its superintendent have engaged in acts of discrimination, were intended, and had the effects of segregating students and faculty on the basis of race. And I just got a short list here, I know I'm trying to work with three minutes today, but I just want to highlight just a few things, why we need, and I really appreciate this discussion. So I applaud the board for bringing it to the community's attention, but there's going to have to be many more discussions like this in order to educate everyone, because this is an issue that has been so misrepresented, lied on, misinformed, so it's going to take a minute to educate people on, on the necessity of keeping it. Some of the main points of the federal order from our perspective, the South Bend school system is the only school district in Indiana still under the order. That speaks volumes. It provides oversight to ensure there are no practices of discrimination. It provides guidance on interventions to ensure every child is treated with respect and given equality. And it's not all about discipline, it's about student assignment. The Coquiller-Dickinson majority-black students debacle is proof that the order is still needed, and I know that wasn't under your tenure, however, it's still in this district. Even though there was mismanagement at McKinley and Edison at the beginning of this year, we feel the Coquiller-Dickinson was more egregious because it is a part of an established pattern of discrimination. The community expressed outrage of how the Coquiller students were treated compared to how the Kennedy students were treated. This is a microcosm.
30 seconds.
This is a microcosm of the differences some schools are provided for. And I will conclude by saying, I have nothing against your in-house counsel, he's a very nice man, but really, Mr. Attorney John Borowski should be leading this discussion. He's got years of experience with the order, with the school corporation. He is a civil rights attorney, and there's no one in this district qualified to address the answers.
Excuse me, let her, let us, let her continue. So, so this is what I want to say. This is just a discussion for today. Mr. Borowski has been invited, and he will be joining the discussion soon, so.
Good.
We just want to hear what you have to say from.
Well, will he be in a public meeting?
I'm sure he will, yes.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Okay.
At our board meeting.
Okay, we appreciate that. And you know what? That concludes my comments right now. I appreciate the warm welcome that I got when I first got here, and there's so much more to talk about, so thank you very much.
Does anyone else have anything to say? Please approach the podium.
I just wanted to hear what she had to say.
Thanks, Gabby, I'm sorry.
Two, three minutes, huh?
Hi, I'm Laurie McGowan. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight, but I do want to say I'm a little bit perplexed, because we know from correspondence we've all had that Mr. Agostino has expressed that he wants to, and consent decree, and that this is his personal opinion, and yet, he's leading the meeting. That gives him really quite an advantage over those of us who are limited to three minutes at a time. So again, I just want to express my concern about that situation. As far as I'm concerned with the consent decree, so my background with this is, I just, I helped Alitha put together that overview. We spent six months, that's not, you know, you think maybe that's just a PowerPoint show or something, you whip it together, we spent six months poring over documents, and what we presented were facts. And we're not, and the reason we did it is because there is so much myth around the consent decree, what it is. It's been misused, abused, to accommodate particular agendas, whatever, okay? But it's a pretty straightforward thing. I appreciate the oversight that we get from the Department of Justice, and Mr. Agostino showed you the letter from 2021 from, from the attorneys at the Department of Justice. I suggest that if we, first of all, I suggest that we just comply. You know, we still have this consent decree because we never have complied, right? So why don't we think about doing that before we move on to anything else? But they give us direction and guidance in how to do things. That's quite a lengthy letter. I spent a lot of time with it as I was putting together the overview, and again, this morning, I looked at that letter again. They're very specific in their suggestions as far as what we need to do. One of those was the problem of the Code of Conduct, which was.
30 seconds.
Administered differently in different schools. I think that's where we need to start, let's go back and do what we were supposed to do. And, you know, there's no cost associated with that, we're already, we have people on board to do it, just do it. The other thing is, the real cost, you're talking now about an alternative school, but that is, this is a system. The system is comply with the consent decree.
Three minutes are up.
Implement the Code of Conduct, and you have much less need for alternative school. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Mike McManus, 51940 Lilac Road. As Mr. Agostino pointed out, the consent decree means that the federal government and South Bend School Corp reached an agreement. Probably both sides didn't get everything they wanted, but it was an agreement. My concern is, with the current situation in Washington, the Department of Education is being dismantled, and civil rights oversight departments in almost every portion of the government are being shut down and closed down. So this community is going to be looking to this board to make sure that the agreement that this community made to have equal, good, public education for every single student in this district is continued to be lived up to. No matter whether somebody from Washington says, "Get rid of DEI," as if that was some box of chocolates or something like that, you are the ones, you were elected by this community to educate the children of this community. Education, free, public, good education is the spine of America. Our country was built on that. Please make sure that you do everything which this great responsibility you have undertaken is necessary to provide good, free, public, equal education for every student in this district. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Tiana Batiste Waddell. Good evening, President McCullough and Board members. I apologize I did not speak to you as I walked in, but I do appreciate the invitation to be with you this evening. Address is 330 West Colfax Avenue. And just a reminder that I do currently own a consulting business that focuses right on this, so just wanted to speak to the five points that Agostino spoke to that I would agree with are the main concerns of the consent decree. The first thing that I would suggest as a solution, just like a doctor, we don't go to the doctor's office and he just does surgery on our bodies. We have to have some type of test run on our bodies. So we need to identify what the root causes are. So I would really suggest that you do a comprehensive district-wide, comprehensive needs assessment to identify exactly what's going on academically, behaviorally, in the classrooms, and what does each school's mission envision. Second, in regards to the disproportionalities that continue to persist in discipline and the overrepresentation of special ed of black male students, I mean, there was a thought bridge report done also that I think is a really great piece of information that goes right along with this. But we really need to spend time addressing intercultural competence. How are we showing up in spaces that are different than us? How are we treating people that are different than us? Do we have biases? Do we have assumptions? What judgments do we hold? So really doing some professional learning with all staff members, all. Kitchen, aides, security, everybody needs to have intercultural competence training. The third point that he brought up was the majority-minority schools. Right now, based on the reports that have been submitted to DOJ, you have three buildings that are out of compliance, Coquiller Dickinson and Washington. It's going to be kind of hard to get them out of compliance unless you start shifting kids around. So how about we commit to the Department of Justice that you're going to invest a significant amount of dollars into those three schools, since the data shows that students that are in majority, high-majority-minority schools do not get the resources they need to function. We have always had the state take money from our community. I remember when I was an assistant principal here, we had the same conversation, and we've wasted so much money and black students continue to be disproportionately impacted. We've always had money taken from communities.
Thirty seconds.
The final thing in regards to solutions, to funding, you have to be efficient and smart with how you allocate the millions of dollars that you have. I would agree with the NAACP, why are we not utilizing braided services? We can tap into those bilingual dollars. We can tap into other dollars to support all kids. Why aren't we having a grant writer? There's grant dollars that are out there that the corporation can apply to, and if you get the culture in order, you'll increase your enrollment, and that'll also increase your funding. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
John Pachesny, 1840 Crown Hill Drive. I remember back in 1980, when it happened, when this took effect, and when you look at today, the demographics of this community and this school corporation has changed drastically. And I'm still trying to wrap my, my personal mind around, how do we balance that where the black student is the majority in the corporation today, based on, and I split it three ways, black, white, Hispanic, versus what it was then? That I don't know, and I'm hoping to hear more and learn. The other issue I have, and this came from many teachers who reached out to me last fall, when suddenly we passed the new Code of Conduct, and then all of a sudden they said, "We're going to have the presentation," and we went to an e-learning day. You don't know how many teachers I've talked to who said it was worthless, ill-prepared, they did not learn anything, the people from the corporation would not answer questions. Gee, that sounds familiar of the past. I suggest maybe the corporation hold meetings with teachers before the beginning of next school year or at the end of this school year to go over the Code of Conduct and any possible revisions or minor changes, and really do a good job of educating them, because many of them said to me, "We really don't know what to do." Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board members. My name is Gabriel Murray. I am a pro resident of South Bend. I'm also a product of South Bend Schools. I'm an employee of South Bend Schools, but today I come to you as a citizen member. So I do have some questions. I don't know how this process works, but if our attorney can respond, that'd be appreciated. So our attorney cited that there are five line items that we are expected to follow through on. Could you reiterate those items?
I think that the three things were the disproportionality on, of discipline, disproportionality of classification of special ed, and then making sure compliance on buildings and boundaries. And then the other two points were, we need to focus on solutions. And my point on finances was that, not that we can't afford to do these fixes, but that we have to pay attention to how we spend money elsewhere so that we do have sufficient money to address these concerns. That's what the point was.
So we have to be physically responsible. That's a great point. And you did share that our state legislature are going to limit our budget, so I can appreciate that. I didn't hear one thing respectfully, and that was good faith. I didn't hear good faith at all. We can certainly address the vestiges outlined, but if we don't operate in good faith moving forward, we are back to square one. And so that is what we have to do to the Department of Justice. We have to prove to them that we operate in good faith. That's why we are under a consent order, you know? I think we have a different interpretation of what a consent order is. Now, respectfully speaking, some of you are products of South Bend Schools. You've seen, you experienced segregation, respectfully. I did not, but I did start schooling in South Bend in 2006, okay? So I have my own story as it relates to my skin color, being a first-generation Kenyan student. So I definitely have my walk of life with South Bend Schools, but my hardships are a lot different than yours. And so good faith is really important to me, because it's essentially, you're working, we're a public entity, okay? So we work under the, our service, how do I say this in the most nice way? We are paid by tax dollars. So we are trusted to operate in good faith, okay? Does that make sense? So this work, right, it has to exist. The good faith piece has to exist without people watching us. Does that make sense? We don't need the DOJ.
Thirty seconds.
We don't need the DOJ to tell us what to do, okay? If we operate in good faith, we'll be okay. So we can certainly address everything that's listed, but if we don't operate in good faith moving forward, we'll be right back to square one. So I just wanted to share that with you all. I appreciate our attorney. I look forward to supporting him and his work. I want to make sure we emphasize that. Good faith is the foundation of everything that we do as a public entity. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Does the Board members have any questions, concerns? Anyone want to speak? If not, I will. You want to speak? Go ahead.
Yeah, I have just some, I mean, we got this handout about the overview of the consent decree, and I'm just kind of going through it. A lot of it talks at least a little bit about the history of what was going on and why the consent decree came about in the first place. Is there, are we going to go through this in more detail at some point, but I'd like to know more about the, what was going on, like Linden or Lincoln or?
When I speak, I'll let you know. I'll tell you exactly what I'd like to see happen.
Okay.
So go ahead. Do your thing.
Yeah, and I, you know, because that was really just more, I mean, I had a little bit of the history mortis, because my mother talked to me for about a half hour about why you have to have a consent decree, why it's important, all that stuff, the, over the weekend and all of that, and she was telling me about, you know, the school I was at, and the roof was collapsing, and a lot of those different kinds of things. And I know that, obviously, over time, we've, you know, because history's been around for so long, things have changed, the demographics of the corporation have changed, and so a lot of the specific challenges and issues that probably justify a neighborhood consent decree have changed, but a lot of the overall spirit that, in terms of justified, is probably still there, it's manifested in different ways because things have just changed over time. I guess sort of my question would be, in terms of the way that it's structured right now, it seems to be sort of a, at least a partnership in some extent with the Department of Justice in terms of, you know, we go to them and they have to prove things, but also that they provide some oversight, they provide some help, they provide some suggestions. Is the current iteration of the Department of Justice viewing all of this the same as perhaps past Departments of Justice, or are we going to look at, at least over the next four years, it's going to be a different type of working relationship in terms of, you know, how we manage and navigate, are we really truly going to be on our own more? Or is the Department of Justice still fully vested, supportive of the concepts and the idea behind what they're supposed to be, you know, the role that they're supposed to be playing in terms of supporting our efforts through the consent decree to make sure we're successful?
So from my perspective, I don't have any direct evidence to suggest that they're going to change up, so it's really inferences that we draw from what we read in the news or speculations. The most recent encounter we had with the Department of Justice was very positive and very fluid in terms of Dickinson and LaSalle, and that they were responsive, they approved, consented to it, and we filed a joint stipulation with the court, and it was approved. And in the past, going back to '21, even though that was a letter that was critical of disciplinary practices, it did provide suggestions and observations, so somewhat in the context of what you're referred to as a partnership. It's, they're not there just to punish South Bend Schools from my perspective. They're there to help South Bend Schools too, to address the issues that were meant to be addressed through the consent decree, so.
Okay. So this is, this is a good beginning to hear the conversation, but as you heard on the presentation, this consent decree has been, has just not been followed, and we have got to, as a corporation, we have got to make sure that our students are taken care of. We have got to make sure that all students are educated, equally educated. And so there were some things that I, that some folks have told me. The first thing I hear when it comes to students' misbehavior and things like that is the parents, the parents, the parents. So what do you do when the parents don't show up? You just ignore the kid? You just throw the kid away? No, you've got to find, you have to find support for those children. And support, you have to strengthen your school-based support networks, you have to expand restorative discipline approaches, you have to offer positive behavior interventions and supports, you have to culturally responsive teaching and mentorships, you have to establish alternative educational behavioral programs, and build community partnerships. So you have to, you have to make sure that we, that we are providing an education for our kids that is the equal education for our kids. And so this discussion, I would like to see continued, because this consent decree has been in operation for so long and has been ignored. I remember being on a committee when I first got on the board, and then abruptly taken off, and then not given any information about what was going on. And so that is not what I would like to see this board do. This is a new board, and they're willing to step forward and make sure that we are, we are adhering to this consent decree and working with community, our community members, our teachers, our parents, and whatever the case may be. So I would like to see us go into, have another meeting at some point in time and invite Mr. Borowski. He's come into one of our meetings, I think the 12th, February, I mean, May the 12th meeting, but I would like to see him come into a meeting like this and talk about this consent decree and things like that. And the one thing that came out of this discussion that I heard was solutions. We need to develop some solutions on where we move, how to move forward, and what we need to do. And we can't do that if we keep ignoring it and having discussions and nothing ever comes of it. So we need to come up with some solutions and how we, how we can move forward to help our kids. And as you know, that budget's going to be cut. I'm not going to use that as an excuse, because we have to find the funds somewhere to make sure that our kids are being taken care of. So that's going to be part of the discussion too. And I would love to hear Mrs. Jones do her overview. We didn't do it tonight, because this is quite an extensive overview, and I don't want it rushed. So when we have our next meeting with Mr. Borowski present, we can probably set aside some time so we can go through this overview, and then with Mr. Borowski do a discussion. So as a board, we will discuss that date and time, and then we'll get back with the community. But I think this is very important to move forward with, and not shove it under the table like it's been done in the past.
I'd like to comment.
Mr. Seideke?
Just a couple of things. Mrs. Jones mentioned about comparison with Hispanic or Latina programs. The reason that was brought in was basically the language barrier. And we don't have a language barrier with the African-American. And I want, I want some of this stuff, whether it disappears downstate or not, I would like some of this stuff put in our policy so it can't disappear. And so, you know, and as far as the numbers, we're going to find a different way to say so many kids are getting more punishment than others, because, you know, if we got 70% African-Americans and 20% Caucasian, and then 10%, there's going to be different numbers for people. I mean, so I, you know, I prayed when I was, since I was a little kid, that God would make everybody green. You know, I don't know, you know, we gotta get to colorblindness and treat people like people. And. And that's, I think that's our board is trying to do. There's been some, I'm sure there, and no matter what we do or try, there's going to be some discrimination with people that got that in the back of their heads. But this has been going on and it's going to go on for the end of time. And we need to do, take the route where we treat each other with respect. We try to give the better education to everybody, no matter what color they are. And I think you finally got a board here that's going to do that for us. And not with Justice Board, with you guys. And we're willing to work with everybody, so.
Let me say this quick. Mr. Snidecki mentioned policies. And the board can look at their policies. And one thing that it said in the consent decree is training. It have, the staff has to have training for this bias training, culture responsive competence. And another thing too that it, that it, we have a right, we could have the ability to do is student advisory council. Students need a voice. So that's one of the things that we can implement. So, and also, when I researched the consent decree, when I researched several areas regarding the consent decree, one thing that it kept saying over and over again, and I have said it over and over again, school counselors. We need school counselors in those schools, elementary, middle school. They have them in the high school, but we need school counselors. It says that over and over again, social workers. So this is another way that we can, we can put those folks in there. That's another way to help. Social emotional learning programs, we have those, we need to implement those. We have the PBIS, Positive Behavior and Support Intervention Supports. We have those. Are they working? If not, we need to tweak them, find out what's not working and tweak those. So those are just some of the things that I'm just thinking ahead of time that we can, we can do to help move this process along. Mr. Costello?
You've inspired me to say some words. Quick history lesson. 1976 was a period of time when this school changed into a middle school. It was a K-6 building. Dickinson was built. And the rearrangement of those grade levels, because they, both Brown and Dickinson at the time became 7, 8, and 9, was because the older buildings which I taught in my first years of teaching at Harrison, at Kayleigh, the older schools were predominantly black students. There were some sections of South Bend and then also the outlining, outlining areas of South Bend. The township schools were basically all white. So there was a perception, because I was there, that the predominant black schools, older schools, were not giving, were not given the resources that some of the other schools were receiving. I think the complaint went from the teachers to downtown. And I think this is where they decided to have desegregation start in South Bend by creating Jackson as a 7, 8, 9 building, Dickinson and Brown. The first year I was a teacher at Dickinson when it opened, vision, the vision you see of students coming together was dramatic. Because all the kids who lived in the white area came in on buses that were all white. And all the kids who came from black areas of South Bend were all black on buses. At lunch, one side of the lunchroom was all black, one side was all white. They did a terrible job of preparing staff, students, administrators, and parents in implementing this plan. And it has stuck with us for a long time. That is one of the reasons in 1980, I think the administration decided that they were not going to defend what they were doing and they were going to open it up and let the federal court step in. Obviously, there was a lot of pressure from the NWAACP and other organizations for that to happen. Thank God it did. Diversity is a strength. It's not a weakness. And you have to experience it to understand it. I had a daughter who graduated from Riley High School. There was a lot of pressure from some of her peers to go to other places in South Bend or the South Bend area. But she wanted to go where her friends were. The principal at Riley High School today was one of her friends. It meant a lot to her. And I won't bore you on where she's at today, but she has a very distinguished job in Washington DC. Lot of it was old to Riley High School. In fact, as the principal of Riley was sitting in the back of the room. I was a, after retiring from education, I decided to go back and help out as a para by walking across the street at Jackson Middle School. I was there the year they made the transition of closing Marshall and having the Jackson students there. I saw the same problem that we had 20-some years earlier, 30 years earlier at Dickinson, Brown, and probably Jackson. No one from downtown prepared the staff, the students, the administration for what they went through that first year there. When you combine students, you have to have some preparation. You have to have social workers, guidance counselors, a lot of individual talks to get the kids, the students, on the right track, to get to know each other. And if not, you're going to have a very difficult job, which the former principal of that school that year, who was put under a tremendous pressure and strain to try to educate all those kids, my heart went out to her. Because I don't think any administrator, I don't care who they were, would have been successful under those conditions. And that's the problem we still have in some degree. Going forward, I look forward to the people who came up and spoke today, as well as everybody on this dais who I know in their hearts, they have one thing, and that is making sure every student is treated fairly and honestly. And there is a, in the past, when people got, get up here and come in and made statements like, you know, some, some people are racist or doing things in a racist way. And then we as a board or superintendent or administration, central office, do not even get involved with them to see what they're talking about? That is also a mistake on our part. Yes, right now, we're here to really listen because we want to get these things corrected or straightened out. I don't want to replace the consent decree, but I want to make it better. And this community, I think, can make it better. This is very, very important to every one of us to make sure before we're finished with our professions or make sure we're finished with our schools or whatever, that we try to do our best to make everybody comfortable and to seek justice and hopefully make it so that every student in this school corporation does receive the individualized attention of being a human being. Thank you.
One thing I would, just a few words. One key word I got out of not only Mr. Costello, but most of his speakers, the key word it is, and I talked to the superintendent on this issue, is what Schuylkill hasn't done is the word training. We need to get everyone trained in that. Mrs. Jones mentioned it, several others mentioned it. These people, we need classes for teachers, our coaches, you know, they don't know, they're not trained on how to handle situations like discipline and IEP kids. They all need, the whole staff needs to be trained. And I think that's a key word in this, this whole process is training. This sheet of paper ain't going to do nothing if people aren't trained with it.
I have one more quick thing to say, if there's no more questions before I close out. I want to say this, and I'm not to bore you. I'm going to say this to you. The gentleman that stood up there and he talked about his experience as a black person coming to South Bend schools. I came here from Chicago. I've never gone to school with Caucasian students ever. I came from a black community, went to an all-black school. Coming here was a culture shock for me. So unless you have experienced racism, you don't know what it feels like. Unless you have experienced separatism, you don't know what that feels like. And so to have these little bitty people come to our school and that are experiencing that and we have this big court order in front of us and we choosing to not follow it is a problem. So when I was researching this consent decree, I wanted to get some more information on it. It says you acknowledge that many behavior issues result from underlying trauma or adverse childhood experiences. So when these little people come to you, not you, but you, it's people, teachers, they're coming with you with all kinds of situations. And so it says that programs provide strategies to support students who have experienced trauma and to foster a safe learning and more understanding school environment. So we have to understand that when we work towards this, getting this consent decree, as we work toward it, we need to keep those things in mind because, again, we have, the majority of our teachers, I do believe, are good, kind-hearted people who really want to teach. But we have to make sure that they have the skills and the resources afforded to them so that they can actually do that and provide the services to the children that actually need it. So that's what I wanted to say before we close out. And this is, this is a continual discussion and I think is a needed discussion. And so if there's no other comments, I would like to say our next board meeting would be March 28, 2025 at 5:30. And I'd like to have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move.
I'm sorry, do what? April 28? I'm sorry, April 28, April, April 28. It was motion by Mr. Snidecki?
Yes.
And second by Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Can all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And when we have our next meeting regarding the consent decree, you will get a notice from us. Thank you so much for coming.